...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You also have to decide if let's go to the car or sit with this thing with these sneakers.
I'm sorry, Kara.
What, with the sneakers?
Yeah.
So, in terms of recognition and comments, I really don't have much to say. Just a couple of things. I hope everyone had a good summer. I hope the staff is well rested because school starts. Not next week. Well, opening day is Wednesday, but following week for students. So, good luck with that. I also need to apologize upfront. I will not be able to attend opening day. My work does not allow me to take that time off at this point, but I'll be there in spirit. If any of you can attend, it's a nice event. Go to the breakfast, interact with the staff, and then after some opening remarks, feel free to scoot out of there.
Yes, actually, the student is going to...
Oh, you're going to?
...agree to make your remarks.
Great, thank you.
All right, I'm going to shave my head.
Part of the job, Steve. It's part of the job.
Wear your armor.
Okay, item 4.0, approve and amend minutes of July 21st. You have the minutes before you. Is there a motion? I move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve as written, seconded by Dave. Take a minute to look those over. Any changes, additions? Anybody pick up on anything after you read your packet? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. That passes. Item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda.
We just have one additional confirmation, but 11 under 11.1A. I would continue to get that. I can just add that person's background.
Okay, item 11.1A. Okay, I'll open it up. Item 6.0, public session. Okay. We will move on to staff reports. We have a couple.
You do. This is your PD. There's a couple extras after here. Maybe there are a couple extras. There's one extra.
There's two parts.
Oh, you have two?
No, it's two parts.
Two parts.
Oh, thank you.
So, you got the ELA standards, right?
In your package.
Yeah. So, I wanted to take you through a little bit of how we actually came to that document. So, you have a little cheat sheet, which is this, that I made for you because there's a lot to think about. So, the second document in your packet is something that Great Schools Partnership and the Maine Department of Education created together. And they put them out as a sample set of standards. They are a subset of the Common Core. They're not the entire Common Core. Because what we really are trying to do is to create a set of standards that are end-of-year for each grade level, that are for all students, and that are minimum standards. So, what you have in your packet are the minimum standards that we expect all students to know by the end of each grade level. They are not the entire, they don't encompass the whole Common Core. There's no way that we can assess every little piece of the Common Core. So, we have to have some baseline. So, this document that's on the DOE website is not a mandatory document, but it's one they put out there if districts wanted to use it. So, as you'll see in the English Language Arts, and it's the same format as well, the standards are only in fifth grade, eighth grade, and high school. So, in order to create the document that you got in your packets, I took the fifth grade standards that were contained within this document. I went back to the Common Core, and I took the fourth grade ones, the third grade ones. So, I worked backwards, okay? So, that's really what's reflected in both the writing and the reading documents that you have. It would have been wonderful if we could have created this document with teachers involved from the get-go. However, we don't have the teeny time for that. So, the process I used was I created the document for them to respond to. And then, in English Language Arts, I brought all grade level teachers together on different days. We have grade level release days. So, one of those grade level release days was dedicated to going over these documents, the reading and writing ones. Actually, it was the writing ones I did that way. The reading ones were done when I was out on, having my shoulder surgery last year. Carrie and Sandra Gossett-Plummer gathered together a district-wide representation of all the grade levels and all the schools to go over those reading ones. So, we have teacher feedback on these. As far as the six to eight ones, though, I sent them over to Adele...
Wells.
Wells, thank you. And she worked with the Woowich and Bath Middle School ELA group to approve those. So, what you have in your packet is, you know, has gone to all the teachers that it involves. Not only did we take the standards from the particular grade level that the teacher represented, we had them look at the span. So, you know, third grade teacher knows what fourth grade kids are going to be expected to do and what second grade kids should be coming to her working with. So, it's really, it's a good sculpting sequence of, like I say, minimum standards. And we will find a way to hold people accountable for these. We're really going to work hard. I mean, this year, I think, we're probably going to spend the year having teachers getting more familiar with it, looking at their curriculum, doing more alignment to the Common Core, that sort of thing. But by next year, we will be, principals will be holding teachers accountable for these standards. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Questions?
Any questions from your board?
So, when we talk about the standards that we have for materials across the district, are we talking about that there is one set of materials that we are going to be using to do these language arts? Is there a writing program? I mean, I'm thinking about Lucy Cockens.
We do have Lucy Cockens.
So, I'm thinking, okay, so do we achieve these RSU-1 K-8 writing standards by using the same program across our district with Lucy Cockens? And go back and say, how does Lucy Cockens, how do we meet these in using Lucy Cockens in a uniform way?
I think that's one way. But you'll see in the writing standards, there are a lot of mechanics, for instance, which we really haven't done a good job of teaching kids to write. So, Lucy Cockens really doesn't cover that stuff. So, we're going to have to have a variety of ways that we approach these standards. Some may be across the district, some could be building-based, some could be teacher-based. But the bottom line is, they have to meet the standard. They have to show that their students meet that standard by the end of the year.
And will that include six traits of writing program? We used to use that.
Some schools are still using that as a resource. It's not a program.
Right.
I just have a mechanical question. In both, in these documents, there's stuff in a parenthetical here, like W1.
Those refer back to the actual Common Core standard.
Which is a document we don't, isn't here.
Right. Have you gotten that document from the Common Core?
No, it's online. It's on our website, but we didn't print it or operate it if you want.
No, I don't.
Yeah, those refer back so that teachers can see, and they can refer back.
So, what's drafted here is the RSU-1 proposed...
Minimum end-of-year all-student standards.
As a way of achieving what's in the parenthetical, which refers to the national standards.
Which the state has adopted legislative.
Any other questions for Judy?
I think we are going to have to spend a lot, some time on this this year. We can get, we can't do it tonight, obviously, but...
I'm working on the math ones as well. And I think when we have the ELA ones and the math complete, I would like to go through the process of board adoption of those, just so that we have your blessing. So that, you know, in future board meetings, if you come back with questions, you know, I'm happy to try to answer them as you become more familiar.
I mean, in terms of the community generally, I mean, you know, this is far, it appeared, it would seem to me that this discussion around standards-based education is much more controversial in other states than it is in Maine. I can't, I can't, I'm not going to speculate what. In New York, it's brought the education system to a stop and forced the state to rethink how they're going to approach implementation. In Maine, it seems to be...
Well, it's bubbling out there.
Well, it's bubbling now, but I mean, to this point at least, it's sort of been gliding along. And it's probably gliding along because folks just weren't, and I'll include myself. I mean, we're just, we're just not that, you know, familiar and aware of the implication of this on our, you know, on the school's curriculum and how we approach, how we approach our diploma. But as you said, it's bubbling. So, it'd be great if we could stay ahead of, stay ahead of the tsunami to a certain extent. And at least have, at least have answers, or at least have an understanding of what this is.
Well, and it's a parter parcel of the whole proficiency-based education discussion as well. So, it's all related.
Any other questions for Judy? Go ahead.
A lot of hard work. They're cooling as much staff who should do it. It is a very positive thing.
It's important.
Having a document to work from is very helpful for, at the staff level. And trying to create the document for staff.
Our teachers so appreciated it.
Yes. I can, I know that process. If this is end-of-year, I think assessment. So, I'm thinking, so we're looking at doing a writing, I'm going to go back to my old teacher language. Doing a writing prompt at the end of the year that would evaluate, are they meeting these standards? Or you would have some sort of district-wide process to say at the end of the year, how do we show this, a writing prompt?
Yes.
We wouldn't...
Or it could be, I mean, you'll notice in the writing, it's set up amongst the three text types of writing, narrative, persuasive. So, Lucy Cockens program is set up so that there are units in each of those. So that, you know, we may assess at the end of a unit, although we would, you know, keep assessing that. But, you know, there would be ongoing assessments as well as year-end.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? I've got a few. Some of them, some of them you've answered. Just for clarification's sake, it says here, final copy K-8, this is the final.
Yes. That's the final from the staff. I mean, if you, you know, the board...
No, no, no. To me, you know, where the details of this go beyond the majority of the board's experience. My concern is more about understanding, you know, like one of my questions to you is, how receptive has the staff been, both the administration and teaching staff, with receiving this document?
They love it.
Okay.
Without exception.
Okay. Because it's very clear. It says, look, by this end of grade level, my students need to know this. We've made it clear. We've laid it out. And I bet there are many of them that say, well, I do this anyway. And they should.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Do parents...
You know, it's probably the, I just want to say, it's probably the first time in my career that I've done something that I had, I have to say 100% support on. They really, really like the clarity.
Okay. Will parents be made aware of this, and will they have access to this?
I think through our general proficiency-based education community forums and those sorts of things, we need to include the lower levels in that, not just high school professional standards. So, yes, and they'll be on the website.
Because I, one of the things that I brought up for a number of years, and I think by having these standards, we could achieve this, maybe in another form, but is the empowerment of parents. When they go to, in a parent-teacher conference or anytime during the year, if there's issues about, they have concerns about what their kids know or don't know, or what they're learning or not learning, now this would allow them to have a document when they sit down with a teacher. And not, you're not just looking at a report card and saying, okay, my son or daughter did very well in this, or not so well in this, or they got this grade and they should be improving. They can say, I don't think my daughter has learned this. At what point should they learn this? Because we know it has to happen in this grade. So, I think parents need to be made aware of this as well. If we do that, we'll see a little bit more education, communication, and buy-in from the community. So, I would try and encompass this in some form, maybe work with staff or administration to see how this document on a grade level can make it back to the parents, so they have that as a tool. Is this something, now that we've done all this work, and it's been, it's taken a few years to get to this point, regardless of what a federal or state administration is, is this a tool that you see us continuing to work with within this district for years to come?
Absolutely, yeah. I think it's what every child should know and be able to do at the end of the grade level, regardless of Common Core, or the main learning results, or whatever, in these three subjects.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Minimal.
Minimal.
Minimal. Like, that's key to keep that right up there in our understanding, because this is not what... This is not the hit.
This is not the boule-à-iron.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for Judy? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, we still have...
That part two.
Right.
So, you have this document, which is the waiver application to the Maine Department of Education for proficiency-based, for awarding a proficiency-based diploma. The initial date was 2018. They are allowing us to apply for a waiver to 2020. So, that means this current seventh grade class. We have decided to do that. There were, you know, several options of how you could go about it, but we have chosen the one that we felt best fit our needs, which is, if you turn the page from the cover page, it's option five. And basically, you know, we do all of the preparation, the planning, the education, the setting standards, but we also get visits from the state, and they're going to monitor our progress, basically, is what it is. So, we need to have this to the state by October 18th at the latest, which means I'm going to be coming to you at the September board meeting for vote, because that's part of this waiver application. So, I wanted you to see what the questions look like before we actually come to you with the answers. And basically, it's about what have you done in the past? Because we were supposed to be, and we have been with Great Schools Partnership and all, we've been working on this. So, we have to document what we've done in the past. We have to have a plan for how we're going to get to 2020. We have to document how we're going to get community input, education. What else here? Oh, we need to decide how we're going to support students who aren't meeting standards. So, we have to come up with a plan for that. Long story short, we have a lot of work to do in the next three weeks. But I did meet with Jay today, and I met with, we have a new, a new Great Schools Partnership school coach. Ken has, Ken moved to Boston. So, he's still a little bit involved. But we have a woman named Katie Thompson, comes right out of Poland? Is it Columbus? Oh, the Columbus. She's right from the classroom, so I think she's great. And she's going to have a lot of credibility with the teachers, which is really... And actually, I went to, she was meeting with the English Department at Morse today, and I went over and sat in, and I think it's going to be a good thing. So, you know, they are key to our getting from here to there, that association with Great Schools Partnership. And she has actually, she and Jay have come up with a plan that, you know, is going to get us from here to there already. They're just really pulling it and making it more specific. But the departments are all involved now. And the English department today was actually even working on assessments. They've already got their standards set. They're working on performance indicators and assessments to measure those. So, you know, it's a lot of work, and there's various levels of support, obviously. But people are getting on board, and I think we're well on our way.
Questions for Judy?
Steve?
Yep.
Will the application predicated on our continued relationship with Great Schools?
No, not necessarily, but, you know, one, not after this year. I mean, we have a contract for this year, so the work that they, yeah, the work they're doing this year will be included.
They don't have to affirm in this application that we're going to continue working with Great Schools or any particular contract.
And one of the things you'll notice in here is a reference to transition funds.
Yes.
Last year, we got $24,000 from the state to help in this effort, and we're going to give a similar amount this year. So, that really pays for our Great Schools contract, pretty much. And additionally, some teacher time after school and, you know, professional skill.
Should I repeat that number again?
Twenty-four thousand.
Any other questions for Judy? So, I just have two questions for you. So, the fact that you're presenting this information that the district is filing for an extension and filling in this application, and there's a lot of work that's involved in getting to standards-based, and now there's going to be a lot of work filing for the extension, what should we take away from this?
Well, I think the work involved in filing for the extension is work that we have to do anyway. So, and it forces us to focus. So, I think it's good. We're not, we're definitely not ready to do it 2018. We'd be bumbling it if we did it.
I'd mess with it if we were doing it right, as in coming freshman class. I'm interested to know, after, I think, the last deadline, the Department of Education has three deadlines to get these applications in. I'd want to know how, what percentage of schools are going to, you know, ask for some type of waiver.
From what I hear, it's a majority, well, over a majority, actually.
Can you get us that information when it's available? And then, my second question is, what is the message that the board should be conveying to the public on this?
Well, can you expand on that question?
Maybe because of the extension?
Yeah, I mean...
What's driving...
There's been an awful lot of discussion within the community about a proficiency-based diploma. And we had a presentation last year, and we kind of got up to speed on that. And now, we're filing for an extension for all the right reasons. But I just want to make sure that, again, getting back to communication, what is the message that we should be sending back to the public about this news? What is that message?
It's tough, and we want to do it right.
I'll do it right, but I'm quick.
Yeah.
I suspect in six years, the Department of Education will change their mind.
I would just like to say congratulations on finding the waiver and getting the waiver. I know sometimes that is as much of a challenge as completing the form. Congratulations on that.
It's going to challenge on every level, I will say. It's good work.
I am. Anyone else? Thank you, Judy. Now, well, I am going to ask a question, and Patrick, you may answer this. Within our packet, we had this professional development plan. And I don't know if that's coming up later on, or if that was something that Judy wanted to present on it.
Yeah, that was for your information only. But one of my goals for last year, actually, was to have a year-long professional development plan for this coming year. And that's what's presented to you. We have all of the full PD days identified for each of the levels. And we have all of Lucy Cockens' work. We have hired a consultant. Her name is Kelly Smith. And she's going to be working with us all year long on the Lucy Cockens. She's a specialist. She's not from the organization, but she's a main teacher who has used the program extensively and does consulting on it now. So, she will be doing our Wednesday workshop. And then, throughout the year, she's going to be meeting with grade level teams. She will be doing model lessons, and then be briefing them with the teachers at different grade levels. So, it's really that, it's on-the-job training, which is supposed to be the most effective PD you can possibly have. So, we're really excited, and the teachers are excited. Feedback I've gotten about her is great. So, that's what you can expect for the rest of the year.
Now, this is great, you know, it's, this is just another example of a way for us to, as a board, to be able to visualize how we spend. When we talk about supporting, not supporting, adding professional development dollars, we've never really seen a document that correlates to how those dollars are being spent. We hear about things throughout the year that this is going on or that's going on. So, this is really helpful. Thank you.
Well, it's helpful for teachers, too, because one thing that frustrates teachers is, you know, to find out a week before a full-day professional development, that, what they're doing, you know. That's, and this way, everybody knows what to expect. I mean, there are a couple TBDs on there, but generally speaking, it's going to stick away.
Great. Great. Did anyone from the board have questions about this, about the PD plan? Okay, thank you. We will move on to committee reports. Start with the facilities committee report and I'll turn that over to Bill.
Okay. Each of you in your packet now has received a listing of the comments that were made at our brainstorming tour through our elementary school communities. I don't know if you've had a chance to read it or not, but it is fascinating. There are a lot of good ideas. And I'm anxious to bring it back to the ad hoc committee. We did not meet during this past month because the July meeting was very unsuccessful in terms of membership being able to attend. And we thought we'd wait until school gets back in session, everybody's back in gear around the school issue and then reconvene the ad hoc committee this month. Obviously, this will be the working document for the committee. And I'm very hopeful that in the not-too-distant future, I don't know if September is unrealistic or not, but I'd like to think that the committee could come up with a consensus report to the board and possibly make some recommendations to the board as a result of the feedback and the committee's feelings on the issues. So that's where we are. We did not meet this month, so I don't have a meeting to report on. But I think we're going to, September's going to be a big month for us, I'm quite sure. And we'll get the committee back together. Did the members of the ad hoc committee get this document? I'd like to see, I'd like to see the material sent directly to them rather than depending upon electronic transmission, so that they're prepared and they have the hot copies before we convene. The other piece of facilities, if nobody has any questions about that, the other pieces, the other piece of facilities is the report that we've all received on the updated bond progress. There are a couple of things here that are a little bit disturbing. Dyke Knoll's quite a ways behind what we wanted for a schedule. Major work's going to be going on while the school is in session, which was a little, and also some work going on at Fisher Mitchell after school is in session that could be disruptive. Principals will have to handle that and faculty will have to handle it. Especially Dyke Knoll, because they'll be working on the roof over a bunch of classrooms. There'll have to be some flexibility over there. Is this an accurate accounting now? Have we made any progress?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to talk with Dave today to get an update. But I can send you what he wants to know. But it's been stressful for Dave. He's done a great job saying the topic of everything. The windows at Morse has been, you know, some of our primary concern so that, you know, teachers can come in. You know, floors will be waxed this weekend in certain buildings just because we've got to get some of the junk out of there before we can do that. I mean, everything we've ready for students when they come on Tuesday. But yeah, some of these projects have pushed up, which I guess we anticipated. And we're working with the crews to say, you know, let's try to start something at three o'clock in the afternoon or two o'clock in the high school. Middle school gets out. Can they work weekends? Can they do things that is not disruptive?
I've made an effort, as you know, to travel around and visit the various schools. And I, it's, the faculty and the staff that were present are really excited about the improvements that we're making and the safety and security issues that we've addressed. I mean, a lot of smiles out there, except at Dyke Knoll. They were concerned that we couldn't get going fast enough. We'll get it done, I'm sure.
Any questions for Bill? Either on the bond projects or the facilities feedback? Comments on feedback?
I think the real crux is when we come back was just that somewhat our focus as a system has had to shift pretty quickly to the high school. You know, I mean, we've already been in touch with planning decisions to try to get some courts on enrollment projections, how much it was going to cost us, you know, in the process of forming a building committee, you know, all of that. The help was tried, but they said we wouldn't for a while back. And so our attention is really going to be focused on Morse. And I think that what we need to decide as a district and as a board is where do we take the information that we get from the ad hoc, give this information, and what do we do with it as next steps for the elementary level? Because we've got to juggle those at the same time.
Morse is going to be an overriding concern.
Right. I think it's interesting because you bring up a good point. Because on one hand, from a facility standpoint, Morse is going to be all-consuming for the district and for the board to implement that. The flip side of that, though, is we know what the outcome is for our high school. We know that within a period of X amount of years, we're going to have a facility that is, you know, will, a lot of times, longevity there. When we talked about our elementary schools, we knew that when we went to the bond, we were looking at a five-to-10-year window. And I think that I would really like to hear back from the ad hoc committee some recommendations before we embark on this Morse project to know, to give the board some direction about where we want to go with our elementary schools, even in the instance that we do nothing. And I don't want to say do nothing, but where does that put us in five years? Steve?
Yeah, no, and we specifically had, we had some discussions specifically about the possibility of creating a K through five or K through six alignment in BAF, which we were going to do. I'm not sure what the conclusion of that conversation was, whether it was an expectation that we would have some report or some sense coming back from you as to what, whether that was feasible, what it would look like, that sort of thing. Or whether it was just an idea put out there. I can't, I can't remember how to end that conversation.
It's here and it was a topic of discussion, particularly with the combined BAF group, you know, a very articulate group of people. And it's on their mind and we're going to have to deal with it, no question. And I think it will be bottom of overall recommendation. As far as the future, I've talked to Dave about that. We're handling a lot of critical stuff this year and he felt that it wouldn't be ideal, but that in ongoing years that we could build sufficient resources into continuing to improve the existing facilities, if in fact we were going to save them through the budgetary process rather than them going to bond. Nothing would be so large that we couldn't handle it from year to year without a major impact on the overall budget. So Dave seems to think we can do it and we can do it efficiently. But obviously, he'd like us to dump about 10 mil in and rebuild everything, but, you know.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, while I agree that a lot of energy is going to be spent on Morse, I agree with Tim, we can't really, we can't affect our other mandates yet. Well, it was self-reposed, really, which is to turn something around on the elementary schools, you know, five to take their time.
The other piece of that is you have, you know, the community kind of sitting on pins and needles, waiting to hear what the board has decided to do. This is a process that now goes back eight or nine months. And I think, take facilities off the table. The biggest thing that I took away from this document was, and we knew it, was the politics of this. It's just so ironic that at each, in every community that you went to, you had people asking about, well, what about the school in the other community? Why can't we do this and don't do this here? But what about the school in the other community? And then the same thing would happen in the other community. Well, don't do anything here, but what about the school in the other community? And I think, I think by September, October, we need to come up with a plan. Make a clear statement to the community and kind of put that plan into action. It may not be something that happens year one, year two, year three, but we know that by this date, this is the goal. And this is how we're going to achieve it. So I'd like to hear back as soon as possible.
The name Harriman is second only to the Politburo in some of our member communities.
I don't get that either. Any other questions for Bill on either of these documents? Thank you, and I really appreciate you making the rounds to the schools. We need to try and do that.
A lot of good stuff. Windows that don't fall in, it's terrific.
I got to check one out. Okay. Item 8.2, West BAF withdrawal committee. Since Kyle is not here, I'm going to ask Steve to report back on as much as he can, simply because we have had, the board subcommittee has had two meetings with the West BAF.
Two or three.
Two or three.
Yeah. Three. So we, yes, we have met. We have met with the West BAF withdrawal committee. We have exchanged language at each turn and probably have narrowed the issues that separate us down to one or two at this point. Although I think certainly from our standpoint, we reserve judgment on the document until it's done. And obviously, it will come back to this board before we finally recommend the adoption of it. I don't know what more, do you want to go there? I can go into some detail?
Could you just tell the board, talk about what the process is now going forward? Once we agree upon a document, our two groups reach agreement? Just inform the rest of the board what the next steps will be.
Agree, disagree?
That's, that is curious. I think, I think this, what we've, what I understand anyways is that the, that the process as, as defined by the board and by the Department of Education is for the two, for the withdrawal committee, the West BAF withdrawal committee and our subcommittee or maybe this board together, signing a document, which is tentative in a sense, because then it goes to public hearing. There are no provisions, don't provide for public hearings before the document is actually executed, well, executed, submitted to the Commissioner of Education for his approval. At that point, it comes back to us. There will be public hearings. I think on their part, I can't speak for them, for the, with the West BAF withdrawal committee, obviously, but certainly can speak for, I can't say I speak for this board either. But my recommendation would be that we would, we would take that document and do as many public hearings as we felt necessary to ensure that the other communities that are part of the RSU understand what's in the document to the best of our ability, understand what the implications of the adoption of the document would be for us. If there are differences or revisions that come out of that public hearing process that we feel strongly about and that the West BAF withdrawal committee feels strongly about, I assume we'd go back into a negotiation, come up with a revised document, resubmit to the Commissioner of Education. And then it would finally come back. The West BAF folks would submit it to their community for a vote in a public hearing.
But the referendum vote from the community can't be ready by November when the general elections take place. They will have to occur sometime after the first of the year.
I was surprised that the three-court agreement got approved very quickly by the commissioner. I agree with what Dave indicated, the tentative recommendation or tentative comment that came back from the board, from the Department of Education, was that the drop dead date has already passed and that if we didn't have a document up to Augusta, it could have been by the middle of August. I can't, I can't remember what that date was. But if it wasn't, if it wasn't in Augusta by the middle of August, they didn't feel that they could approve it and it would be ready, as Dave indicates, for a referendum vote in November. I don't know whether West BAF, we haven't had any conversation with West BAF. I'm not sure they need to talk to us about that, whether they would go out for a special, a special vote, put it out to still, if it's approved, that would still result in West BAF pulling out of the RSU for the 15, 16 school year or whether it would be off for an entire, an entire cycle and literally a withdrawal from the 16, 17s. I'm not, I'm not sure that we've had that conversation with them.
The assumption is that all of this will proceed and there will be a referendum that will allow the changes or the withdrawal to be complete if it's approved for, by July 30th, the month of 2015.
So 15, 16s.
Yeah, and all of the provisions will then apply. All the provisions of the agreement, withdrawal agreement will apply as of that day.
Any questions for Steve? Okay, just wanted to add, make a couple points clear. Nothing, no document will vote a vote or go before a workshop or a hearing until the full board has had a chance to approve it. Something will come back to you folks to check it out before it goes out. And then, just to sort of lay the groundwork, conceptually, the way that we have approached this is we have always said, our preference is that West BAF would remain part of the RSU. As a board, that would be our choice. We would, you know, like West BAF to stay part of the RSU. But that said, we've tried to negotiate. So one, we've not been an impediment to the process. We've not held that up so that they can expedite this in a timely fashion. And two, we've always tried to negotiate in a manner that was in the best interest of the communities that continue to be part of the RSU. And it's with those communities in mind that we hope for. So I just wanted to make that clear. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report. Patrick?
Well, to be brief, I just want to thank Vida and Deb who are here tonight. As you know, we have one less person in our office and it's just been a very smooth transition this summer so far. We haven't, you know, we haven't been knocking on my cubicle to say they're overloaded or anything, but it's been a very smooth transition. I appreciate both of their work ethic and professionalism and taking over roles that maybe they're not, you know, haven't been accustomed to. So it's been a very productive summer. Speaking of summer, it's been busy with PD for teachers. The bond work has been very productive, as Bill talked about, but it's also caused a little bit of angst and stress to the district. But it's, you know, it's positive and it will go well. And then busy hiring. You know, we, I'll mention this on opening day, but 19 people retire with approximately 500 years of service. So that's, you know, a big loss for us. And we have about approximately 50 people that will either be new to the system or changing roles in the system for this coming year, which, you know, I'm very excited about. I mean, we have a new staff orientation tomorrow. We hired some excellent people. But, you know, change will be difficult, but it can also be very positive. And so I'm excited. But we have one, well, I'll mention that, we have one more physician, professional physician to fill that we're hoping to hopefully fill tomorrow for the next day. But again, we have so many good people joining us. So I have.
Okay, thank you. Item 9.2, financial report.
The financial report, thank you, Patrick, for your comments too. It's been very busy. The financial report that you have in your packet is for July and it's just the very beginning stages. That out of our $28 million budget, we've spent approximately a million dollars. So we're just starting the process. And basically, the expenses that you see here on this report are supplies and that sort of thing, because the major salary expenses don't hit until September, because everything's been encumbered in June. Any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
When we order supplies for schools, are we in the process where we can really look at group purchasing for things in terms of buying things in bulk and getting deals from distributors because we buy at a certain quality level? Are we at that point yet, not to take away individual decision-making from schools or teachers?
I would say yes, and from what I've seen, because I've just been involved in the purchasing. But basically, we get bid prices from all of these companies to buy the supplies. So somewhere in the process, although I haven't totally been involved with it yet, they do come in with lower prices. I mean, we go to School Specialty or WB Mason and it's lower prices than... So I would say yes. Everything is shipped individually to the schools so that, you know, you have to sort of do that too, so you don't have that step of having it shipped one place. Like our paper bids all came through and they all were at one location and David transports them out to the schools.
Any other questions on the financial report? Okay, thank you. Onto old business. Item 10.1, did anyone want to add anything to the Board goal discussion that didn't happen? Please.
Well, I was just, I know we said three goals, but I was thinking about all the conversation about our facilities. And I just was wondering if we should think about, because we've got a new school coming on and because of the Hareman report, that we should not look at either making a separate goal for facilities or adding in the three goals that we have, an item in one of those that would be specifically about.
I think that's a great idea. If you want to propose maybe drafting something specific to facilities, but I think there's no reason why, under those broad headings, that facility shouldn't be added. I think that's a great idea. Would you mind doing that, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on goals? So my goal, again, is that we are able to vote on these goals at the September meeting. I don't want to drag this out so that we don't establish some goals until November. So that's my goal.
One of the things that I think Sherf should have in our discussion was that last year's goals, last school year's goals, we did a pretty darn good job of meeting those goals. And I would hope we will continue as we go forward with a new set of goals to be as effective in meeting the goals.
Very good. We will move on then to, we've got a bunch of second readings of policy. We'll begin with item 10.2, Second Reading of Policy FD, Facilities Funding and Construction. Is there a motion on this?
I move we approve.
Move to approve, as written by Steve, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Just wanted to add one thing and it sort of pertains to all of these policies. There was some discussion on all of these policies and I want to really thank the Policy Committee for taking that discussion in to heart and incorporating that into the changes. Thank you to the Policy Committee. All right, there's a motion on the floor to accept or to approve. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Item 10.3, Second Reading of Policy G B E C, Drug-Free Workplace. Is there a motion on this policy?
Move to pass.
Move to pass by Dave, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to pass, raise your hands. That passes unanimously. Item 10.4, Second Reading of Policy G C F, Professional Staff Hiring. Is there a motion?
So move to pass.
Move to approve by Alan.
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Item 10.5, Second Reading of Policy G C K, Professional Staff Assignments. Is there a motion on this policy?
I move we approve or adopt.
Move to adopt by Steve, seconded by Bill. Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion to adopt, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Item 10.6, Second Reading of Policy G C I, Professional Staff Development Opportunities. Is there a motion on this?
Move to pass.
Move to pass by Dave, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to pass, raise your hands. And that passes as well. Item 10.7, Second Reading of Food Service Job Description. Is there a motion on this? Move to approve by Bill.
Second.
Seconded by Dave. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. That passes unanimously. And item 10.8, Second Reading of Head Cook Job Description. Is there a motion?
I move we approve.
Move to approve by Steve.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Again, passes unanimously. And item 10.9, Second Reading of Food Service Assistant Job Description. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Jennifer. Is there a second? Seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. And that passes. Okay, on to new business. There are no personnel item reports. Oh wait, excuse me. Item 11.1A, we have two nominations.
We really, for your information, that's unfortunately, that puts people in place. And so the first one is Rachel Garland, Special Education Teacher at Deick Newell. You can see how many people we have, eight applicants and five were interviewed. And then, Special Education Teacher at Fisher Mitchell. We actually had three applications this, and we had three people that we interviewed. And we've just finished the interviewing today. But the committee is very confident and Justin Keller was coming to us from Lewiston and thankfully, will be able to join us from White's Hill this week. So we're very excited to have him as well. And one position, professional position, that I probably will end up emailing you, the backup, is an elementary school nurse just, you know, came open. We hired someone this summer and unfortunately, they had to, so we're in the process of filling that right now.
Any questions for Patrick, for those new positions? Okay, thank you for that. And then, item 11.1D, Schedule B Appointments. I had requested from Patrick just that we get this list prior to the start of school. If anyone had any questions, comments, concerns about any of these Schedule B positions. Many of these apply to either positions that begin in September for the year or for seasonal sports that begin or may have already started. Thank you. So did anyone have any questions or comments? Patrick, did you want to add anything?
Again, we try to give you updates twice a year. You know, August is great. Sometimes, you know, it's been September past, I know, because we just fill these positions. Sometimes at the last minute, we have to find a freshman coach or a junior coach. But just to give you just an update on where we're at with the people in what positions. And again, I think it was, you know, when it comes budget season, you know, if people want more information or anytime you want more information about these positions, you know, we create a database that explains every position and what it does.
Any members of the Board have any questions about what some of these positions are for? All pretty self-explanatory.
We took a look at them just this past year and had a more extensive explanation of each of them. So I feel confident.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. We'll move on to 11.2, Adult Education Partnership Agreement between RSU One and Wiscasset. You have that partnership agreement in your packet. This is an action item, the Board does need to vote on this. Is there a motion?
I'll move we approve it and then we can move from there.
Okay. Bill made the motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second.
Seconded by Steve. Patrick, did you want to talk at all about this?
I'd rather say something briefly than Pam is here to make a quick presentation to you or to answer a question to my dad. But this came about with Wiscasset going, you know, out on their own and just looking at their adult ed program. And, you know, as you can see from some of your backup, I think, that you have with your, that their Board has discussed this in public session. They voted, you know, to have RSU One kind of oversee their adult ed. Doesn't mean that there will not be any adult ed programming at, located at Wiscasset High School. This is that we're going to be the overseer of their adult ed program. So with that, I'll let Pam kind of just give you the nuts and bolts and then see if you have any questions for her. And again, this is something that, you know, Pam and I have talked a lot and this is something that if, you know, you're in agreement tonight, this would be a one-year trial basis. And that we would revisit and see how effective and it's, you know, it's working for us. So Pam.
In about February or March of last spring, Wayne Dorr came to me with very concern that they didn't feel they could fund the comprehensive adult education program that they had in existence in Wiscasset. They're very supportive of the mission of adult education. But with the withdrawal from the RSU, it was extremely costly for them. And they felt they could cut, and they actually cut almost $100,000 from the budget. That's how much the locals were being asked to pay them. So he came to me and said, "The Board wants to keep a high school completion program only in Wiscasset. Would you consider overseeing that?" And I immediately said, "Of course," because I wanted to go away, number one. Number two, I don't know if you know it or not, but prior to me coming here, I was actually in Wiscasset as director for five years and built their program for them. I didn't want to see any of that go away. Adult learning opportunities are so important for high school completion in particular, as well as other things. But that piece of the program, I could not, I couldn't say no. So he said, "How much would it cost me?" I kind of argued with him a little bit and came up with the $10,000 that you see before you. But it also not on that piece of paper. We now have, we will have control of the Adult Education Family Literacy Act, the federal grant that we wrote 12 or 13 years ago that we regionalized. It was that Wiscasset and Demosclada. But that grant will now be under our management rather than under Wiscasset's management. Wiscasset does have to stay fiscal agent because of law and we can't change fiscal agents. But that will give us that control. And it will be that money that will actually fund their high school completion program in Wiscasset. We will also hopefully run, well, we have an agreement with University College to run higher education programming through interactive television. And that's something that they've been doing over there for probably 18 years. It's been a long time. And it doesn't generate a lot of revenue, but it generates enough revenue to cover the person who is responsible for making sure the ITV system is working properly and all the reporting is done and the testing is monitored and that kind of thing. So that's kind of where, how it built. And there were lots and lots of discussion as to what we would include. And like I said, it went right back to the Board saying, "High school completion only for this year." And we'll see what happens in another year. But, so we have put into place, if it's okay with you people, that we will have adult learning opportunities at Wiscasset High School from 4:00 to 7:30, four days a week. The ITV coordinator will be there anyway and she will act as our data person and our secretary. And that can come out of the applicant because she's being the data person. And a couple of instructors to do the learning opportunities so that people can complete the high school completion, get the high school diplomas. And we will do, probably no credit recovery for high school people, high school age students, because that it's pretty expensive. But we will be doing the HISA slash GE, whatever you want to call it, and the high school diplomas for adults.
Any questions for Pam?
Just what does the $10,000 specifically pay for? What does that cover?
What it really will do is just add to our revenue here at RSU One. And it's, I will be overseeing it and so it will go towards what you would pay me. So it reduces your expenses.
The folks that are on site in Wiscasset are covered by the grants.
By the grants.
For grants that pay.
Yeah. It does, and then there's, I do want to work cooperatively with the Wiscasset Recreation because they're going to be taking on the enrichment side, you know, the yoga and the whatever, exercise programs or whatever. And I would like to be able to advertise for them. So I want to put that in the brochure so it will look like a cooperation, a true cooperation between Wiscasset and RSU One. So that we can say, "Yes, Batho, Woolwich residents can go there and take the classes that they want to take at the price that Wiscasset lets them pay." A little bit of that money will go towards that, but not very much. Won't be much actually.
So essentially, we're providing administrative oversight. You have to, you don't sign financial documents.
Yes. Yes.
For them.
Actually, the Superintendent has to. And in the case of the federal grant, it will be, Mr. Beveridge will be signing that because Wiscasset is still the fiscal agent. And we will also oversee the college transition piece, but it won't, I'll just make sure that he gets the signature. So that's actually going to the Lincoln County. It's, will take 10 minutes at one time. But it's, will take 10 minutes of my time. It's not anything. I will stop in. Yeah, it's on my way home. But so it will be convenient for me to stop and make sure everything's going well, the staff.
I guess my question was if, are we, does the RSU assume any, any fiduciary responsibility as a result of our relationship? I mean, you know what I mean? Or are they, are they still in control of books?
No.
Or are we in control of the books?
We, we are in control of books. And...
I think we just need to be sure that we have, you know, proper, we're identified. Is that the right word? If we're signing, if we're attesting at some level to the fact that their program is financially sound and we're controlling their expenditure of money and maybe I'm not...
We, the only money that will be expended will be the money from the federal literacy grant and through them. Any other money that's expended will be through us because it's coming to us. And it will, it will be ours and it will be the same thing that we're doing right now. It won't be any different.
Well, yeah, I guess, well, that's a good point. I just want to be sure. If there's an audit of their program as there is, as there is an audit of our program?
It'd be part of ours.
Part of ours. So, so when we, when we look at our adult education program now, we're looking at it, not only stuff going on here within the RSU, but, but also... Am I making any sense? I mean, I don't want to confuse you.
I think...
Again, confusing.
What do you think, Patrick? Is, I think that it's just, um...
I mean, this is, I mean, Pam's been doing most of the late work on this. I mean, Brunswick Mount Air Act, we've done some work. He's, you know, I did not talk to our attorneys about this. I mean, it's, as far as an audit goes. But, you know, we're basically assuming the oversight and, you know, through our books and fiscal agents.
We will have fiscal management and it will go with us. And it will just be the $10,000 that's coming to us will be added to our books. And anything that goes out will go out through her.
Well, that's the 10, but they're controlling the grant.
Oh.
See, it's a...
Yeah, because of...
See, for me, it's sort of a split responsibility. I mean, we're getting some money to do part of the program, but there, because the grant can't be, you know, because we can't be assigned fiscal agent.
They're signing, they will be signing the year end, yeah.
I would just like to make sure that if there is an audit or when there's an audit and let's say it's a negative, you know, there's a negative finding, that the responsibility is there to the extent that, you know, to the extent that something, that something's going on.
What, the way we've run that program in the past, for the past number of years is that Wiscasset, like for me, I'm, we're separate from them, but we get their money. I send a invoice per se to their business manager for a certain amount of money and then she writes us a check and sends it to us so it becomes part of our auditing process. And that will be the way it will continue. So the money will...
As long as, I mean, I'm trying to say I don't want to confuse them. I'm kidding.
Well, I have questions that... No, no, no. I have questions that, that's piggyback what you're saying, not necessarily from a financial standpoint, but from an oversight standpoint. Was there any consideration given that since we, we already have instructors in place, we already have a program here, that anyone who wanted to take part in that program would come to Bath?
Yes, that conversation was, and because I know the community, it's not going to happen. The people aren't going to. They don't have the rides.
Sure.
It would be just like asking our low-income people that are 22 years old and have three kids
Yep.
to try to get to Bath.
So logistically, it didn't work.
It just, it, with the population that we work with, I want to see that being very good.
So then with a remote program that's in our responsibility, who's doing the oversight of the instruction? Who's making the contact with the students?
I will be working from there on Fridays and doing all the high set testing and the intakes and the diagnostic testing and everything that needs to be done. I will do for the intake process. And then we have two instructors that are phenomenal, that have been working...
So you've, you've worked with those instructors, Pam?
They work, they're part of us.
Okay.
Yeah, they're part of RSU One, absolutely. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And then the ITV coordinator, I actually hired myself when I was in Wiscasset.
Okay.
So I'm very confident that the staff is top-notch.
Okay, great.
Top-notch.
Any other questions for Pam?
Comfortable with it, Patrick.
Yeah, I mean, Pam knows I've given her a hard time, you know, on this one and asked a lot of questions just because it's, it's new. You know, I know Wayne, you know, and I know he's not there anymore. But I wanted to make sure that it was, you know, what their reasons were, why they wanted to do this. And obviously, you know, Pam and I both want to help them and still provide services if we can, you know, to, you know, to high school students mostly that need that, but also the adult population. So like I said, the contract's word in the way that if it doesn't work for us, then we give notice. Like we have concerns about it, then we, you know, then we don't go forward with it. But I think we're going to do with a positive outlook and a work force.
Yeah, as long as there's checks and balances in place, because with any type of situation, you look at risk reward, what do you have to gain versus what do you potentially stand to lose?
And some of my biggest concerns were, you know, to be quite frank with Pam, when we talked about this is, you know, does she have the time and the, you know, the ability to do this, you know, in a week or, you know, over a year period of time? How much is it going to drain? Because I don't want to see it have an adverse effect on our program. So we've had those conversations. So I think, I think we thought it through, but I mean, obviously you've got experience at the point. You can make a judgment on it. So. But it's not costing, it's not costing the system any more money. They're actually, you know, gaining some, you know, money for the services that we're going to provide. So.
Okay. Um, there are two, uh, new policies, first readings. Nope, this is not an action item. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. You're keeping me in line. There is a motion on the floor right now to approve. Uh, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. I'm sorry to jump over that. Apologize. Okay, on to item 11.3. Uh, we have two, uh, first readings. Item 11.3A, policy GDA, support staff positions. Any discussion? Comments? Okay.
I think the E, the second sentence, E in that case, we did not, did not have an E on.
Remove the E. Anything else on this one? Okay, we'll move on to 11.3B, policy GDF, support staff employment. Any issues here, concerns? Okay. Um, item 12.0, uh, public comment. Okay. No public comment? Uh, 13, uh, we need to set next meeting dates and location. Scheduled for, um... 22nd of September. Does that work for everyone? All good with that?
Yeah.
Add it to your calendars. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Steve, seconded, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Thank you. All right, all those in favor of the motion to adjourn, raise your hand. That passes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.